Call this special meeting to your order. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Present.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Lamson.
Here.
Public comment, please. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on an item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered.
Okay, so we have some public comment that's not on the agenda. First up is Bonnie Rodriguez with the Galt Chamber. Then after that is Mel Shamblyn, then Cara Morris, and then Ray Patel.
Good afternoon, council and staff, and it's good to see all of staff here. I'm coming before you, obviously, to speak, do some more trash talk. I just want everyone to know that I dug, dove very deep in this topic, literally. I feel like I crawled around in some dumpsters around town and everywhere else, including up at the state capitol. I was very disappointed to hear, when I reached out to Assemblyman Cooper's office and to State Senator Galgiani's office, that neither one of them had heard anything about this, nothing. Since 2011, when these things were passed, there was no complaints from any city. There was no complaints from Cal Waste, that saying that this was going to be a burden. I'm very disappointed that the city did not reach out to try to see if there was one way or another to help offset some of these costs, not only for the businesses but for the residents as well. So, we have one box that was not checked, that to watch over our community and over our residents and businesses. On top of that, I am hearing many things from, as the chamber president and as the newspaper editor. I'm hearing a lot of rumors and a lot of facts about how this is affecting our businesses. We have businesses that are shutting doors. They're going to be shutting doors. I have a, and I'm sure you saw in the article, that Gabriel Chu has said that he is, he knows he is going to lose tenants over there. I don't know how many of you know Gabriel Chu, I've had the pleasure of meeting him. He's a very passionate gentleman when he gets fired up. But his attitude was, "I don't care if they sit empty. It's a write-off for me. It will be Zombie Land over there. Screw you, Galt." This has caused a fissure. It is causing a, and we're soon going to have a Grand Canyon, not just between the business community and the city, but between Cal Waste and the business community. And residents are up in arms as well over this, because they're already feeling it. Had a gentleman come in the office Monday, I believe, saying that he was at a restaurant and he saw the price of his bill and his first complaint in his head, he said, was, "Why is this so expensive?" And then he read the article, and he said, "It made more sense of what's happening out here. Our businesses have been hit by the state for minimum wage increase, and then the city turned around and increased their wastewater and increased their water, and now have increased their garbage. They have no avenue. They have nowhere to go. They have no other choices here in Galt. Their only choice to continue to make money is to leave the city. And if we have other proprietors who don't care that they sit empty, that's going to leave Galt with nothing." That's, these are the businesses that all of the FFA kids come to looking for support, that all of the nonprofits come to for support, and they are going to hit and get nothing. The city council failed, absolutely failed. Cal Waste failed. And the failure is going and seeking some sort of reprieve, because I had to read over those assembly bills and those state senate bills once to find an out, and no one searched for it. No one even thought to look for it. There is an out. We are a rural community. We could have had an out. Now, my concern with that is that even if we are, we don't have to abide by those mandates of the diversions, I think our rates are still going to go up, and I think you all know what I'm talking about. Something else is going on here. Something else happened. And the residents and the business owners overall are hurting over this. And you need to find a solution to this. You have a budget workshop today. This should be as part of the budget workshop subject. You need to find a way to help these businesses, because they're not going to stick around. They won't be able to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Next up, Mel Shamblyn with the Comfort Inn Suites in Galt.
Trash talk again. You know, I'm just a business manager. I don't own the property. I send the bills off to owners who, I tried to prepare them, but I'm pretty sure that when they see that huge increase from 350 bucks a month to over 2,000 a month, that they're going to come screaming at me like there's no tomorrow. I don't see how any business can stay in business with those kind of increases. You need to do something. Need to do it now.
Thank you, Mr. Shamblyn. Next up, Cara Morris with the Galt Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, council members. I was going to apologize for my attire today, but I don't think I need to. So, I'm from the, I'm the executor director of the Galt Chamber of Commerce. We currently have 208 chamber members, and some of these businesses are struggling. With the massive price increase to the businesses, I'm not sure how they're going to be able to survive. The businesses are forced to increase their prices, and we, as a community, will not be able to afford to shop or eat there. We might go to a Grove or Lodi, because it's cheaper. And this will cause our Galt businesses to go out of business. I went to Detroit, Michigan, and St. Louis, Missouri shortly after the 2008, 2009 Great Depression. And walking through there, it was kind of scary, because it was like a ghost town, because so many businesses had gone under, and they were just empty. And it was scary, and then that's when crime comes in, and that's all we need. The Chu centers will look like a ghost town. I don't know about the east side, but definitely here on the west side. And I'm not sure how some people can sleep at night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Next up, Ray Patel.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, since last time, now I'm looking at the city, with all due respect, is struggling to see the budget where they can find the extra money. But it's not about question of city finding the money. City, poor city, and you guys making 10% is administration fee out of Cal Waste. Is the Cal Waste we have problem? It's not with city. Until you understand the fact, the root of this problem, nothing's going to help. I mean, you finding little money here and there in the budget is not going to solve this problem. It's not going to help anybody. So, please try to understand. It's not you guys' fault that, that, that now you're to find money from here and there. As it is last time, I noticed that you, we are on very tight budget, and the economy at the maximum, the maximum height from this point onwards, it can only go down, never can go up. Everybody knows that. And things goes up, has to come down. So, if we don't act upon now, it's not going to help. Our problem is that you just invited only and only Cal Waste, instead of inviting three or four refusal service company and have a fair negotiation. Like, for example, if I have two motels in city of Galt, and I'm doing business since 10 years, I'm profiting about 10 million. If I donate 50,000 to charities in my poor city where I make money, big deal. That doesn't mean we give just one, one behind the back door, just grant them the whole contract. Right now, Cal Waste, Cal Waste called in my architect to expand their building. Yes, who's benefiting? Only Cal Waste is benefiting at the cost of our city and our citizen. And you guys are here to, "Oh, let's get together, find the budget, scratch out some money." Why? You guys are not at fault. You don't need to feel guilty. You guys just charging reasonable 10%. Innocently, these, these, these guys got awarded this contract, which is very wrong. The procedure never got followed the way it's supposed to be. We need to invite, let's say, if, if, if Mike is doing, the, the, the public work is paving 10th street, right, in the city, they need to invite three or four contractor. They cannot just call one bid and just give them, and you did same thing. You cannot do that. Just that is unfair. That's what our problem is. So, you shouldn't struggle that, "Oh, let's get together. This is we have like five, five million dollar budget. Let's scratch five here." No, we are struggling. They don't, citizens don't deserve that. You guys, we are already struggling. Police department has barely found the radio. They get some charities, they're such a good team, you know, under chief, and we don't want to take away something from there, something from Mike, and, "Oh, we satisfy Cal Waste." Our problem is with Cal Waste. And cunningly, they never, never say the right thing. They, in the report, I read, the special report, they says, "Oh, there is no comparison. We cannot find any comparison. We relying on a Cal Waste." So, judge and jury is Cal Waste? No, don't work like that. I think you, until, until, sorry about that. I'm extremely sorry. So, until, until you open the negotiation, call two, three company, I'm not saying which company, until you negotiate fairly, this is illegal. This is wrongly been done, and I'm going to challenge. Everybody going to be challenged. They are on board with me. Now, I love my city. You guys are who? You guys are me. I'm not gonna, I don't want to fight against you. I want to fight, fight for justice, for right versus wrong for the poor girl in free market. Poor girl struggling, "Oh, what happened? I had to take my garbage." Same fool on us. I can afford 5,000 for garbage. It's not, it's about principle. Look at that girl. Struggling, she has to take her garbage to house, and that is not going to work. You scratching, why? You guys are not at fault. Cal Waste, like, look, if, if I knock the car's door, they will say, "This has been done unfairly. Let's open arena court to behold with this contract." I guarantee you that. I'm challenging you guys that. That if, if, if we sue on behalf, the city's name is dragged. We don't want to bring you in, but it will automatically, because you were part of the process. Now, our problem of starting out loud is Cal Waste. They're expanding their building big. They bought big. As I said, I'm investing my hotel. Tomorrow, I'll make 10 million. I'm not going to come and say, "Oh, I'm giving you 50."
I'm sorry, Mr. Patel. You're going to have to wrap it up. Five seconds.
Three seconds. I'm watching that clock, ma'am, but I appreciate you anyways.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Let me comment real quick. These people are very upset, so we have two screens up here. They can see when they have a time. If they get to the time and it's up, then we can interject and say, "You're done." If they get to the timer and it's up, then we can interject and say, you're done. I'm sorry, you need to wrap up. But I, I don't, I don't like the fact that we cut people off with a few seconds left. They can see the timer. If they run over, then we'll cut them off. But if you citizens can please stay within the timer, we'll give you your full time. Thanks.
Okay. Subject number one, Budget Workshop. Mr. Haglund.
Thank you, Mayor Lamson, members of the council. Good afternoon. This afternoon, we are going to be discussing the status of the city's current fiscal year budget. We're nearing the end of that fiscal year. We commonly refer to it as FY19. It began in, in July of 2018 and runs through June 30th. And so, we want to be able to provide the, the council with a midterm budget update as to where we stand this budget year, as well as talk to you about FY20, which will begin on July 1st of this year and run until June 30th of next. This is going to be an important discussion because it sets the stage for some work that we have to do as a city. As you will see, and as our finance director, Claire Tyson, will review with you this afternoon, we have some deficits in some of our funds. And we want to be able to highlight what those are, and then work with the council, talk to the council about how we go about eliminating or working to eliminate those deficits over the short, mid, and, and long term. It's very important as a municipality that we chart a long-term course, or a, a course of action that will serve the city over the long term with a balanced budget and a budget that has us working both with the, the, the community and other stakeholders to live within our means. That is a, a, a very important underlying theme that I would like you to be thinking about as Ms. Tyson proceeds with the, with, with the presentation. And there'll be certain points where I'll, I'll probably be, be interjecting some of my viewpoint relative to the city's financial condition. And of course, the council can always ask any questions as we, as we move along.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, mayor and council. We're going to take a look at the midterm budget today. I'm the finance director, Claire Tyson. We're also going to look at fees and the capital projects. There's a review that's been done, and we have proposed budget amendments for both 2018 and 19, and for 2019, 20. Preparing this information for this mid-budget process has been a real team effort. And so I want to start by saying a couple of things. One, this is workshop, so we'll, we'll take our time and go through it as slower, as fast as we want, as you would like. But I also would like to thank, first of all, the directors and their staff for all the important analysis they've done, for the information they've provided, answers to questions, and all of this has been within a pretty tight timeline. I also want to thank Mr. Haglund. He's jumped in and the final stages of the preparation of this budget, and been very helpful assisting us and advising us. I also want to thank my finance team. Michelle Neely has led this process through the last few months with help from Matt Boring, and they have been very important to this project. The finance staff has also allowed us to bury ourselves in our offices, have provided countless pieces of data to us, and I appreciate everybody's work on this. I want to point out that a midterm budget process normally takes six months or more. This team got together about four months ago, and we're presenting tonight. So, I really appreciate their efforts. So what we're going to look at tonight is a midterm budget. So as you all know, you adopted a budget in, in June of 2018. It's a two-year cycle here at the city. Later, yes, I will. I will have lots of documents for you because I know paper's good, right? So here at the city of Galt, we do a two-year cycle. And so the, the, all of these budgets that we're talking about have already been approved. What we're, what we're recommending today are proposed changes to those budgets. So we're going to talk about master fee schedule, capital improvement program, and the budget adjustments that we're proposing for 1819 and 1920. So I'm going to go over master fee schedule update quickly. The fees that we're talking about, they're implemented to cover the costs of public service that are requested by businesses and residents. These fees exclude those services that protect the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. City of Galt master fee schedule complies with Prop 26, which prohibits government agencies from charging more for a service than the reasonable cost of providing that service. So many of the fees in this schedule are below cost. Most of the fees on the schedules will be increased by a CPI. That CPI at the end of 2018 was 4.36. Some fees are limited by the market. So fees associated with parks, facilities, and recreation activities are generally limited by market. So they do not follow the CPI increases. Some fees increase by council action or some other agency's action. Impact fees, measure A rates, there, those are given to us. The contract rates, those are already approved. So they're embedded in the fee schedule and in the budget. Capital Improvement Program. The CIP update is a five-year plan. CIP is a five-year plan of the city's anticipated capital projects. Capital projects are construction projects or capital equipment costing 30,000 or more with a useful life of at least five years. The budget, budgets for these projects do not include staff costs. So these are just the direct costs. City of Galt CIP document also includes costs beyond, beyond the five-year timeframe, so anticipated projects. And these projects may last several years. Our, our, what we look at is, from a finance perspective, is a fiscal year slot, slice of that at a time. The majority of the budget changes being proposed in 1819 are from rollover from funding from prior fiscal year, so that the incumbents carryovers. And so if the project is not completed by the beginning of 1819, the funding rolls over. It's already been earmarked. Additional projects have been added, received new allocations, sometimes from grants. Most of the, most of the new appropriations are for state-funded projects and water plant improvements. So this is just a brief schedule of the, kind of the bigger projects that are included in these changes. So we're going to focus, or I'm going to focus in this conversation on 1819 and 1920 because it's the focus of the budget, but the full CIP plan expands more than that, obviously. When looking through the projects requiring budget, there are several projects that have minor revisions, and these are the bigger items. So Fourth Street Parking Lot and Open Space, that increases 219,000. That is multi-year project. So 2018, 19 is the final year of that project. We accelerated that project, so the 150 in, it was previously in 1920, is being eliminated. It was spent earlier. The entire project actually costs 369,681, and it completes in 1819. Transit Operation Maintenance Center, we have 309,000 programmed there, new money. The Safe Routes to School, there's a couple of different funding sources here, but basically it's grant, measure A, and there's also some additional funding. And so that total is well over 1.6 million. We're reducing one of the projects that was previously on the plan. It's for Walker Park, and it has to do with the limitations of the funds, both to do this phase of the project and to maintain it. In 1920, in addition to the adjustment for Fourth Street, we're recommending a pavement. I think this was transportation funds of 413,000. The firing range, which was part of the CDCR contract, that 150,000 for those improvements are listed here, along with industrial water production well of 700,000.
I have a quick question, Claire. Of, of these projects up here in the dollar amounts that are identified, what, what percentage would you say of those are grant money from money that was taken either received from other government agencies and/or nonprofits or wherever we can get grant money from? What, what percentage are we looking at?
Are you thinking of grants and impact fees and all of that? Or are you just thinking?
Not impact fees. Impact fees are a fee.
They are.
To our developers, or built, home builders and/or commercial developers. I'm talking about grant money, not something that we charge, but something that we go out to find and bring back.
Okay. Do you have a?
Approximately.
Yeah. Gosh, if I, if I had to guess, and obviously being new here, but it can vary quite significantly from year to year based on, you know, if we're successful or not. From what you're seeing up there, I would say you're probably somewhere in the maybe 60 to 70%. So, very significant.
And, and clearly, I'm not talking about, so we have two fiscal years up there. I'm not talking about industrial water, water project well, the connection fees or park development fees or any of those. But setting those aside or, or including those, you'd say about 60 to 70%.
Well, for what we're doing here, yeah. I mean, but if, you know, if you were going to, if you wanted to get a percentage taking into account the full picture, you know, as far as measure A money, you know, SB1, those kinds of things, it's going to drop down, probably maybe in the 30 to 40% range.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question to Rich, actually. Mine's more specific. Out of the projects we're seeing up here, I didn't think people, of course, understand that some of this came from grant money, like the Safe Routes to School, Fourth Street Parking Lot. But that's talking specifically about projects like that. The numbers that we're seeing up here, for example, the 1.4 million for the Safe Routes to School, that project is still, is it, isn't it, that project's complete, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the projects that are still up there, that, like the Fourth Street, or any of them for that matter, what's the addition, what, what money do we foresee coming out of our money that's not grant money? What I want to know is, I hear a lot of people talking about, well, yeah, we got a grant for X amount of money, but it always usually doesn't cover the whole project. We still have to chip in some of our own. So, looking forward, since we're talking about budget, I would like to know which of these, any of these projects that you know of, either there or something I haven't talked about, that is going to require some input from our, our general fund.
Yeah, oh, okay. I was going to say, are you talking, when you say our money, general fund specifically is what you're talking about?
It's not specifically earmarked. I know there's certain money that has to be used for certain.
Right, right, right. So typical, Mark, do you want to jump in? I didn't see you there.
Council, mayor, Mark Clarkson, city engineer. Give you some, some detail on each of the projects. The Fourth Street one was done by CDBG, 100%. For staff time, for, for the construction, everything was done at that time. The tran, the Safe, Safe Routes, SRTS project, over 90% funded by combination of, of different SAICOG funding and grants, different measure A and, and SB1 that we had on that. When you look at, and that's both combined there, about 1.6 million. We're, we're right at 90% there. The, the rest of them that you look at, the pavement one that we have there, it's SB1 and measure A. And the industri, the industrial, like you indicated, Councilman Lozano, it is capacity fees. The one that's coming out of CDCR, that is a enterprise fund that was set up based on the, the leases, the lease that we have. And I think that covers it right there. So most of that that you're seeing is grant and a related measure A.
I know we like to talk in acronyms, but what is CDBG?
Community Development Grant.
Lock Grant.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And it's about 150,000 a year that's allocated in us, but we have to show need and everything else. There's so much that we have to go through. And we had a couple of years backlog that we hadn't used it. And that's where we were able to use it in the, in Fourth Street.
To follow up on Sean's question, he said 90% of the money was grant, grant funds. I think what Sean was getting at is how much of, of that remaining 10% came out of general fund? Or did any of it come out of general fund? Or did it come out of transportation, other transportation funds locally?
Yeah, none of the SRTS came out of general fund. It was all, it was measure A, gas tax, grants, combination thereof.
Generally speaking.
But we would match transportation funds into that, our match that we had to do. And it was, it was right around 10%. Thank you.
Yeah, for transportation projects, it's rare to use any general fund money.
So the only project I'm seeing up there that would be something that would be out of one of the departments that's, that would be Walker Park, for example. There was mention that we're not continuing with that because the funds aren't available.
Correct. That, that money there, or the project, was going to be all?
Impact fees.
Capacity fees, development fees. But if we build it, then we have to maintain it. And it was restrooms and some parking lot overage. And so it was just, how are we going to maintain it? You know, you know, because we're already hurting off the general fund there. You can't use capacity or development fees for maintenance. You can construct, but you can't do any of that money for maintenance.
So just so the public understands, I've, I had people ask me this, and I've looked at this. So when, when a developer puts in a subdivision that we've approved, and those impact fees, those impact fees, I've been asked, people say, well, can't we, instead of building a new park, because with, then we have so many parks, we can't maintain them all because, you know, to build it, the money goes to build it, but not to maintain it. So there's no way we can, we can ever use that money to, to maintain. It has to be used specifically for those areas because that's what is earmarked. I mean, right?
For new construction, yes.
Salaries are prohibited. You cannot pay.
Correct. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Great questions. So now I'm going to move on to the budget review. So generally speaking, beyond the fees and the CIP, I'm going to take a look at operating budgets. All of the funds have been reviewed, and all the budgets have been reviewed. And the following are the proposed modifications. So citywide expenditures are proposed to increase 1.6 million. That's really made up of several different large items. There's, there's a whole bunch of smaller items that I'm not going to go through today. 750,000 of that is encumbrances, and that is money that's basically been earmarked in a prior year's budget, didn't get it all spent, we're carrying it forward. So that's not really new budget per se, but in order for us to provide a complete budget picture for you, we're bringing that as part of the number. 428,000 is the spending of grant money or special revenue money. So some of the big items are California Energy, the PEG grant, and South SAC Habitat Conservation, which is not actually a grant. And 405,000 is the police patrol vehicles, the increase for that. Council approved that back in March. 292,000 is a reduction in personnel costs. And personnel costs actually went up based on the contract approval that the council approved on the MOUs. However, we also made some other adjustments. Some of those adjustments have to do with the change in salary for new. Some of those adjustments have to do with the change in salary for new hires, and also, there's also a large negative amount in the citywide, having to do with the vacancy savings. So, I wanna kind of pause here. I don't know if the city has ever used this method of budgeting before, but as you review the budget on personnel, when we got to Measure R, because there are so many vacancies in Measure R, it was unrealistic, the budget compared to the actual. And so we did an evaluation of that and made an adjustment of six hundred and twenty thousand, and that's a reduction of the budget in personnel, both salaries and benefits associated with vacancies. We pretty much know how the year is going to end, not exactly, but there's enough of the year that it's passed by, that that's a pretty solid number. In fact, it's probably a little conservative, but that's embedded in that number, and that's what makes your personnel costs overall for the city go down. It's really a one-time adjustment, although we will always be looking at vacancy savings, and we've actually implemented a small one in Measure R in the next fiscal year, nineteen The other item on here is a reduction for coming from the state of California and what they approved on the ROPS for the successor agency, and it's been reduced by a hundred and fifty-three thousand, and that amount goes to CCSD for this year's settlement agreement. So it's the, it's the value of that piece for CCSD contract. So it's really kind of passed through. Citywide revenues, the proposed increase is one point, almost one point two million, and that is made up of, I'm gonna talk about general fund in a little bit, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand is general fund. Another two hundred and eighty-one is, the city received a one-time reimbursement, development, developer reimbursement, and it's specifically earmarked for the Northeast Lighting and Landscape, which is awesome one to put money into. That's Fund Thirty-Two. So that's in these numbers. Excuse me. For the next fiscal year, nineteen twenty, the biggest increase to expenditures, the expenditure increase is seven hundred and twenty-two thousand. The biggest increase is additional cost made possible by the new refuse contract. So, we, we receive funding from those rates, we also have costs associated with that, that we have to spend out. Some of the cost increases are from the rate increase that passes on to the city, so we also have garbage bills. And some has to do with the collection that we provide, the service we provide on collection of the residential waste bills. Overall revenue, increased citywide is only a hundred and thirty-four thousand, and there's so many different adjustments in here, but a lot of them are small, but I'll, I'll highlight a couple of them. There were some, there was a reevaluation done of how we're doing with our building units, and those are coming in slower than expected, and so we're adjusting that in the revenues. That's actually bringing numbers down. On top of that, we have an increase in, that offsetting increase in the refuse contract, and then we have some capital adjustments. So just, this slide is really just a summary. What is the net impact of these proposed modifications? For eighteen nineteen, revenue increases one point one, expenditures one point six, but seven hundred and fifty of that is, is the carryovers that we just talked about. So the net increase for citywide is fifty-nine thousand, eight sixty-four. For nineteen twenty, the proposed changes, revenue one thirty-four, expenditures seven twenty-two, giving a net increase in expenditures of five eighty-seven. I kinda wanna stop here for a minute, because I wanna make, make sure that in the mid-year budget review, what we're looking at is really what council's already approved. So if you've approved a contract, or if you've approved some other measure through your council action, that's what we've tried to embed in this, in this budget. We haven't really put any new ask in at all. There are no new positions, there are no new, it's, it's just kind of a status quo, kind of a budget. I'd like to move on to general fund, we kinda talked a little bit about this, but I'll talk a little bit about general fund and those adjustments. Expenditures are increasing by one point three-five-seven. Again, a, a big part of that is the encumbrance carryovers of six eleven. The labor agreements, so this is where you're seeing the increases, it kind of got shadowed in the citywide, but these are your labor agreement increases, one eighty-five. And then grant spending, so when we add grants into the budget, we're adding it on the expenditure side and on the revenue side. So two eighty-three is grant spending for the PEG grant for this year, and then California Energy Grant. Revenue increases eight sixty-nine. A hundred and seventy-six of that is really carryover, so kind of like on the expenditure side, it's, it's really money that carried over from the prior year. New grant funding is coming in at three seventy-seven, that's PEG, energy, it's a variety of items. And then we've done a reevaluation of taxes and fees. There is some increase there, primarily, it's two sixty-nine, primarily it's property tax adjustment. We monitor what the county provides to us, and then compare it to what we've estimated in the past. Revenue adjustments for, I'm sorry, for nineteen twenty, expenditure adjustments are three hundred and sixty thousand. Again, labor agreements are part of this budget increase, along with PEG grant spending. And then the revenue increase of one fifty-three is really a wide variety of things, but property tax and other taxes is really what's driving this hundred and fifty-three thousand increase. So again, reviewing kind of what we have for general fund. The net impact in eighteen nineteen is, when you total up all those numbers, which are just repeating what we've already provided, the total increase in expenditures is over, expenditures over revenue is fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five. For nineteen twenty, with an increase of a hundred and fifty-three in revenue and an increase in expenditures of three sixty, your net increase expenditures over revenue are two hundred and seven thousand. So, overall increase, again, pretty, not too bad.
Can you clarify PEG grant spending for me?
Yeah. So the PEG grant is, can't remember what the funding agency is, remember? Sacramento County, that provides funding for the improvements made here in the council chambers, so the technology, the, the room in the back, I think was part of the eighteen nineteen funding. We request new funding every year to improve the systems, so incrementally we're improving this room here.
For public knowledge, though, I'm trying to like, keep, like, and just dumb it down all the way. When you say grant, people are thinking, oh, that's money that we don't spend, we got that from somewhere else. So, then why is it listed under the general fund expenditure? Why is, because that looks like our money that we've spent from general fund. Explain that, can you explain that for us?
Thank you, thank you for that. So grant funding comes in, if it's specified for a particular purpose, then it may end up in a variety of different funds. It, it basically ends up where that activity occurs. And this is money coming from state, federal, local agency, it can even be coming from business. And they, those grant funds come with specifics, like, you can only spend it on this, this, and this, you can't spend it on salaries, or you can't spend it on this, that. So it, what we try to do is, when we bring it in, we try and bring it in as a revenue and expense. The reason why it's in general fund is this, the activities that occur here for the council and this facility are in general fund. So the revenue's coming into general fund, and the expense is going out of general fund. Did that get to the heart of it?
Yeah, we, we got that money and it went back out, there wasn't like we...
Correct. Yeah.
But, but again, it's also for a specific purpose, even though it's under the classification of general fund. It can't be spent on anything else but the activities within this room.
Correct. Once you accept the funding, you've accepted the terms of that funding. And PEG grant is actually a really good example. They, they tell us, we provide, here's the kind of equipment that's compatible, and what we'd like to purchase to make this, this system up to date, so the community can see these, these meetings, so that we can have the proper facility. They then come back and say, yeah, we don't like that one, we want you to do that one, or that one, they'll give us a group of things. So, they're very, they can be very specific on what we can spend it on, what we can't. PEG grant specifically, there's no salaries. So, what Mike's team and what the IT team has done to, to do the work here in this room this year, and will next year, none of their salaries are included.
Thank you. I, I have a question. Are you now going to move to other than general fund conversation, or are we at, are we still talking about general fund?
I was gonna continue with general fund.
Okay.
If, but we'll have time to talk about any of those things.
Here's, here's what I would like to get to, so that I can help process. We have several funds that, that we spend city money out of. One is general fund, one's lighting and landscape, all of these things. I would like to, at the end of each section, or the end of the presentation, have an idea of what our expenses are for each year, just like you did here, and what our revenue is for each of the two fiscal years. Because at the end of the day, I think we have some decisions to make, certainly in the next year, but, but I would, I would suspect probably in the next several months, that have to do with how we get that more in line with each other. So, it would be nice for me, a voice of one here, that, to, to be able to say, here's what we are spending, or we're projected to spend for this year, and what we spent for last year, and what our income was, so that I know the difference.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that, that kind of lays some context. I'm gonna go through a series of, of charts that might help get us to more of a full conversation on that.
I can assure you, however, there'll be quite a bit of time, not only at this meeting, but at subsequent meetings, to certainly delve into each of those areas that you just articulated.
So this is a chart that all budget people like to present. Where does money come from? So, I hope you can read this, but basically forty-eight percent of our revenue for the general fund comes from property taxes. Twenty-four percent is coming from sales taxes. Then there's a variety of license and permits, services for char, charges for services, investment earnings, they finally hit a percentage point, and I decided they should be here. Misland use revenue is kind of everything else, oh, I'm sorry, and other taxes. So that's, the, the idea of this chart is to say, where does money come from that pays for the services for the community, these are core services. The next chart is, where does the money go? This one is by service department, so police is forty-seven percent, Public Works fifteen, Community Development seven, City Offices five, and then Central Services, everybody else. So, as is appropriate, the majority of our spending is on public safety services.
Claire, can, can you delve into central services, what that includes just a little bit?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Matt.
Is that a whole nother slide?
No, no.
Okay.
No, I combine them. Your, your slide from last year had so many little slices that, it includes, I'm gonna let Matt correct me if I'm wrong, it includes finance, IT, HR, economic development, city manager. Is that it? Say it again?
City Attorney?
No, City Attorney is under City Offices.
Oh.
Non-departmental.
Non-departmental. Thank you. Okay, so that's all lumped into that.
Okay.
Then I wanted to take this and kind of turn it on its side, and say, same money, where does it go by category? Seventy-one percent is going to personnel, the cost of all of us. We are a service industry, and seventy-one percent of our budget goes there. Twenty-seven percent is operations and maintenance, minor capital one percent, CIP one percent. So back to your question, Vice Chair, the, the general fund pays very little for, for capital projects, at least currently.
So operations and maintenance, twenty-seven percent, that's, that is not, when you say operating and maintaining something, obviously people think, well, staff to do that, but that, that doesn't, all personnel is in the seventy-one percent.
Correct.
So all of the operation and maintenance would be cost of goods, anything that's a, a fixed cost of a tangible item, more or less, right?
Yes. And services and anything else we contract out, so...
So that personnel outside of the city personnel? Like if we subcontracted a service for...
Auditors.
Landscape or something?
Well, I do wanna point out that this does not include Parks and Rec, this...
Okay, little bad example, but you get what I'm saying.
Yes, absolutely.
And, and part of this is because the city is a service provider, and so, you know, we don't produce, we aren't, we're in a private company that, that produces automobiles or produces a widget. And so, what we find is that as the service provider, think of public safety, streets, well, yeah, I guess partially streets, those sorts of services, anything that would be in the general fund would go here, and so that's why you see your personnel as the single largest category of where your expenses are going, because we're, we're rendering a service, as opposed to, you know, manufacturing a raw material into a specific item.
Yeah, I just, I think about, so, just to dive into this a little bit more, operation maintenance, so anything within the city that we subcontract out to another company privately, that we don't provide in-house staff for, would be under that twenty-seven percent.
That is in the general fund, yes.
Right, out of the general fund. So, and you know we rely on department heads, obviously, for, I mean, we don't have experience with other cities and looking, whatever, just, because I know you're new to Galt recently, and you came from Stockton. Just a frank question, is seventy-one percent pretty standard for a city for personnel cost, or does it vary a lot from city to city? Is your opinion on what we spend for personnel?
I don't know every city, but I would say every, I don't know the percentage exactly, but, but it would be heavily weighted towards personnel. Somewhere probably between seventy and eighty percent.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Under your, your operation and maintenance, that, that covers things such as heat, light, power, all your office supplies, everything, copy machines, all of that.
Everything else.
So, it, it would appear to me that most of that is for day-to-day operations, rather than contract services.
Absolutely, oh, absolutely.
I would think that contract services would be a very small portion of that twenty-seven percent, is that correct?
I would say that's true, yes.
Yeah, I was just clarifying that that was in there, though.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I'd, I'd like to delve into a little bit of Parks and Rec. So, we reviewed all of the budgets, we being Armando and his team, thank you, and made some revisions. Most of these are based on some kind of contract necessity, or something council's approved. And I'm not gonna go through all the details, because the numbers are so small, but in eighteen nineteen, the budget adjustments are an increase of seventy-eight thousand, and in nineteen twenty, the budget adjustments are a decrease of a hundred and thirteen I can, if you have questions, I can talk a little bit about the ups and downs.
Yeah. Are we talking about a net of...
Yes.
Twenty-three thousand, or are we talking about, we were seventy-eight thousand in increases, and then all of a sudden we're at one thirteen... Or are we talking about, we were $78,000 in increases and then all of a sudden we're at $113 negative? You're talking about, there's a net here.
There's a net.
You're showing the increase and the decrease.
The increase and the decrease nets out $78,000 for one year and $113 decrease in the next year.
Which leaves us to the decrease of, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
So we were over budget $78,000 and now we're going to be under budget $113?
Two different fiscal years. So for fiscal year 19, when you net the revenues, any increase in revenues with increase in expenses, you come out to an overall budgetary increase of $78,000. Then, turning to next year, as we look at what we're budgeting for next year, again, between what we estimate for revenues next year and estimate for expenses, you're seeing a decrease of $114,000.
Sorry. So what I'm understanding is, we went from, we basically went the other direction by $200,000, if you're combining the two. Budget 18, 19, we were, had an increase of 78. You made an adjustment.
Once and then, we're going to adjust that upward. The other one, we're going to adjust downward. So the net impact over the two years is, is what? Forty, $45,000?
And the negative.
To the good. To the good.
So they've decreased expenditures.
Okay, got it. All right.
Yeah. And I apologize for slamming that together, but when we were tearing it apart, it was just very small numbers. So let's take a peek at the chart, the same kind of chart for parks and rec. This is where the revenue comes from. Market, 77%, recreation 12, aquatic center 6, parks 4, and then miscellaneous 1%. So the majority of the revenue in fund 6 is coming from the market, which, no surprise. Where is the, where are the expenditures going? The market, of course, is the greatest piece of this pie. In other words, it costs money to produce that revenue. And 31%, parks 23%, recreation 17, aquatic center 9. And that after-school program is actually the ACIS program. And there's a little bit there in SOARs and city tots and then administration. If we look at the same amount of money and how it's being spent, what is the category of spending? What kind of costs are they? Predominantly personnel, 61%. There's operations and maintenance, which means we probably outsource a bit of what we could otherwise bring in-house. And then there's a little bit of CIP because these include basically city facilities and then minor capital. Any other questions on parks and rec?
This does not include lighting and landscape, like maintenance.
Not yet.
Okay.
Good question.
I'm sorry, one quick question. On the previous slide, the pie chart, the one before that. So 23% parks, 14% administration, so the administration, that's not all personnel for parks and recreation, that's just admin? Or that's all personnel?
That's just admin.
Okay. So would the other personnel fall under the 23% for parks? And recreation is 17? Or is it spread amongst all these? Like 31% market, so that's the market staff and aquatic, is the other personnel spread amongst all those other pieces?
Correct.
Okay.
Two different ways of looking at the same pie. This one's by category. So then we want to look at fund balance. We always get back to what is the impact to the general fund fund balance? So this schedule here starts with the beginning of 1819. So July 1, 2018, when the auditors completed their audit of the year before, they said the general fund fund balance was $10,612,000. So from that, we had not yet reduced it by certain kinds of activities. Some of them would be normal deferred loans, prepaid, those occur at every year end. Then the lighting and landscaping subsidy from the prior year was, had not been removed from this. So that's being removed. And then parks and rec contribution. We also have a council policy on the reserve for the 25% of expenditures. And so that is, has been earmarked there, coming down to 4.8% of available fund balance. What we wanted to do with this is then show beyond that, what other adjustments need to occur to really have, what do you have available to spend? Because from a only accounting perspective, that available fund balance is 4.8, but there are commitments against that. So we have revenues coming in, transfers in, we have expenditures. These are the total numbers, not the numbers of change. And then capital transfers out. Then we have the lighting and landscape subsidy. Now this is for, this is the northwest because the north, or west side, excuse me, because the northeast had that one-time increase in it for that year. So they didn't, they're not expected to go negative in the current fiscal year we're living in. But the west side is expected to go negative. And then parks and rec, and then deferred maintenance. So your true available fund balance is 2.4 after those commitments. And then we extended that beyond to 2019, 20, based on the budgeted numbers. And that final number is $777,000.
So Mayor Lamson and members of the council, if this chart doesn't yet give you pause for concern, I would ask you to really concentrate on it because it should. What this chart is showing is that at the end of last fiscal year, June 30, 2018, there was $10 million with, without certain deductions applied to it. To include, the last deduction there is your reserve policy. So you're setting aside $4.4 million for a rainy day there, right? And what you have is this unallocated fund balance of $4.8 million, almost 4.9 rounded. And then we add in the revenues for the general fund, transfers into the general fund. The general fund does make certain, provide services for other funds and other types of transfers. And then we have our personnel, operations and maintenance. So those pie charts you were looking at, you're looking at blue for personnel and gray for O and M and some of the others, we deduct out almost $15 million, $14.6 million. And then we have some capital improvement expenditures and other deduct. Then we have the, not the northeast, but the west side and our parks and rec, transfer to parks and recreation because the fund 6, which Claire was talking about a little while ago, brings in a certain amount of money, but our expenditures far exceed that. And so what you've really chewed through in, or the city has chewed through in the course of this fiscal year ending June 30, is about $2.4 million, leaving you a remainder value of 2.4. And so the reason why I want you to concentrate on this is because on July 1, that 2.4 transfers up to the top and that becomes the starting unallocated fund balance for FY '20. Now you're still going to have your reserve for a rainy day. You're still going to have $4.4 million reserve for a rainy day. But then we go through the same process, revenues in, expenses out. And we come down that obviously if we're going to end FY '20 on June 30 of 2020 with $777,000 remaining, we've chewed through more than, you know, $2 million. And so, or close there too. And so what that tells you is that, or what that shows you is a roadmap. And the roadmap it's showing you is the roadmap for your rainy day fund if we don't do something to correct the deficits. And so some time ago, as we were talking, I mentioned to the council, you know, you always want to identify that point in time that something went wrong. And this isn't a problem of a single point in time, but it is a long period of time. It's not a single individual that gives rise to this, what I would call a financial crisis for the city. But it is a collection of individuals and decisions made over time that resulted in the belief or the hope or the desire of the general fund to underwrite other funds that were falling into deficit and not at those points in time taking corrective action. Corrective action could have been to try to raise additional revenue or find additional revenue streams through increasing our lighting, landscaping assessments in areas where just by operation of law, they've fallen behind because they were started so early. They didn't have a CPI inflator and they're pretty much locked in at a certain amount of revenue. And over many, many years, the cost of service rises. It ends up rising past the static revenue, basically the static revenue levels that can come in. And so they go into deficit and the general fund backfills them. Similarly, with parks and recreation, that same thing has happened. Whether it was a collection of decisions to provide programming or to provide parks with the requisite operations and maintenance required to maintain those parks after they're built. And perhaps, you know, it may have been, there may have been good forecasts at the time and it may have been that the best decisions were being made at the time to provide amenities for the community. But where we find ourselves today, and I would assert where we will find ourselves in two and a half years without doing anything, is where that doesn't say $777,000, where we have chewed through the rainy day fund and now we're in deficit. And now we really can't afford it. You may have chewed through your cash flow and you're now worried about being able to make payroll or being able to provide some of the essential services to the committee, to the community. And so when I talk about a point in time, at least now, today, this hour, that slide, the next slide that you'll see are what we should define as the point in time when we resolve as a staff and as a council to lay out a path forward that gets us out of this particular problem. I believe that the measure of the council sitting here today, the measure of the staff sitting here today will be decided at some point in the future as to how we met this challenge and we met this problem and we decide, how we decided to correct it. You know, we've all told, whether it's our kids or others, you know, money doesn't grow on trees and we all wish it did, but it doesn't. And so we're going to be faced with, over the course of the next few months, making hard decisions about what our core services are. What we're going to, and then funding those core services with the level of revenue that we have coming in to the general fund and certainly to the parks and rec fund and perhaps to our lighting and landscaping funds as well. And that is all going to mean at some level, a diminution of service. Whether it's taking our lighting landscaping areas to once every two-week landscaping or once every three-week or once a month, or whether it is deciding about the level of landscaping we're going to have in our parks or the level of programming we might have. All of those are on the table because the only other option is to kick the can either a little bit down the road or a long way down the road. But we all know that when you start kicking that can, the answers may seem to come easier, but the problems just continue to mount. And then they become insurmountable. And so if there's a slide you concentrate on with respect to the general fund, it's this one. And I think the next slide depicts the Parks and Recreation Fund. Similarly, it's a similar situation, but we start the, the year out in, this fiscal year out in June of 18, at a negative already. It's only to be made positive by $100 because of what? The general fund underwriting that negative amount. And so then we have revenues coming in. And what's interesting about this slide is it shows us something that, again, should be, you know, on this slide, the moment in time is when we read that there's $3,250,000 in revenue. And then skip down a couple lines and you see that basically the operations and expense and personnel costs are $3.4 million. Just right there, it's above. But then we load in some things to make it better, which is a general fund contribution. And then we, you know, by make it better, all I mean is we're underwriting. But where, if we go back to the previous slide, what are we doing? We're depleting our general fund down beyond its capacity to generate revenue to cover that. And so between the two funds, without the, without underwriting anything, the general fund is probably okay. Whether it's without underwriting parks and rec, without underwriting the landscape lighting districts, the general fund has a fighting chance to make it on its own. But we have the, certainly the issue of fund 6 or parks and recreation and decisions of the past, moments in time in the past where the decision was made to underwrite those. Now, in many cities, in many of the cities that I've served, the recreation and/or parks, parks and recreation, some cities had parks and recreation departments, others just had recreation. But nonetheless, the general fund contributed money to those. But none of those cities, and I doubt there are any others to be found in California, have a market that contributes the level of funding that our market does. But we could sit and wring our hands and gnash our teeth about that all day. The reality is, we have a deficit. Wherever you want to define it exists, whether it's general fund or parks and rec. It nonetheless exists. It's not going to go away. And we have to set out the hard decisions, the service level definitions, how we fund those within the context of the revenue we have. And we have to redefine what this organization provides to the community and how it provides it. Now, some of that can be short-term decisions. Because in all of this, we can probably take some short-term actions to either fully or partially eliminate the deficit while we pursue some midterm and long-term actions, if that were the desire of the council, to raise revenue. You know, we've often talked about going out and trying to raise revenue by going to the community, asking them the level of landscape that they want that are funded by these, at least these two fund, landscape funds that are in the negative, and going through a process, a 218 process to raise that. But the community may say no. And yet, we may be still faced with nonetheless, even if they say no, having to live within our means. And there are other options, would be other long-term revenue options that are voted on, say, at election time or things like that. But certainly, we have to take very short-term action to significantly alleviate in FY '20, the deficit that exists. the deficit that exists, whether that's through cuts only to the general fund, cuts only to Parks and Recreation, or cuts to both. But we need to take that action because the, I don't believe that I could say with a straight face that there are other legitimate, reasonable options before you.
I have some comments. So, trying to figure out where to start here. You know, it is frustrating because going back, you talked about points in time, and I keep thinking back to where I watched a presentation in this very room, like literally less than 18 months ago, and the picture was like rainbows and unicorns. And then now we're like, oh, we're in really bad shape. So I know we can't dig into the past, but I just feel like, the word revenue keeps popping up, we need to figure out how to generate more revenue, but I think, you know, the core of living within your means comes from your expenditures. And I struggle because I think about decisions that were made last year for expenditures that can't be reversed. Well, I mean, they could, but it's not realistic, so, I mean, and so, you know, decisions that were based on bad financial information, who, fault of no one in this room, but be that as it may, and now here we are. You talk about the Parks and Recreation, I think what, I know there's citizens out there that were thinking the exact same thing when you were talking, and your breakdown of this time was really good, so thank you for that. And what you made a comment where you said, you know, Parks and Recreation departments in most cities are funded entirely, they don't have a market, so obviously, we're very lucky to have the market. So I think what people are wondering, and I'm wondering as well, is how can we, if most cities fund their parks or recreation entirely out of their general fund, but we are lucky enough to have a market that can chip in, you know, 1.3 million, 1.2, whatever, then how are we, how is our parks or recreation at the state that it is now, where it's basically, it's basically, it's a ball and chain pulling the general fund? You just mentioned that the general fund could have a fighting chance by itself, but you have things like lighting landscape, and the money that we have to chip into the market pulling it down. So how do we get from Parks and Recreation, that's normally funded by a city and general fund, we have one that gets supplemented in a huge way? How does it get to be where it's still that terrible? And to be honest with you, Mr. Solis and I just had a conversation the other day, he and I both consent that, you know, a lot of feedback from the public right now, that parks and recreation could be, has a lot to be desired right now, could be better than it is. It's not in a state where we're really proud of it at the moment. So how would you explain that to people that are asking that question?
Sure. No, that's a fair question, and what I would say is that, one, there's a basic fact out there, that oftentimes, the only thing that cities truly have in common, on an apples-to-apples basis, is the word "city" in their name. Because they all provide different levels of service, they all have different revenue sources. I last served a city where, we see that up here, 24% of our general fund revenue comes from sales tax. It's, and even at that, it's not a lot of money. I mean, it's 2.5 million dollars, something in that neighborhood, I believe. The last city I served, about 49% of its revenue came from sales tax. And so, you know, and it was, the 49% was dramatically larger, I mean, orders of magnitude larger than 2.5 million dollars. And so, when we try to go out, and we say, well, this city does this, how do they do it, and this city does that, or they fund it from the general fund, let's peel back a minute, let's hold that thought, and let's peel back to a point in time when GALT didn't have, or didn't have the GALT market. And what if the GALT market had never come about? And what if all the revenue, reaching a high point of 3.5 million dollars at some point before it's now fallen off to something just shy this year of 2.5 million? What if it never had that? Different decisions would have been made in those years, at that time, about the level of recreation service that could be provided. And it may have been a much closer question about what we could provide. It may have been just that what we'll do is provide passive parks. We really don't have the wherewithal, as a small city in the Sacramento Valley, or Upper San Joaquin Valley, however you wanted to find where we're at, as basically a farming community, we may not have had the ability to provide the level, the depth of service. And so, it might have been a much different viewpoint. And so, I think that to answer those questions with integrity of thought is to peel back and say, well, okay, how can other cities do it without a general fund, I mean, without a market? It's probably because they never had the opportunity to augment services. When I was here before, and Kurt can check me on this to see if I'm accurate, you know, some of our recreation programs that are still going on today, I think at a time were free, or didn't cost, you could sign up. T-Ball is one that I recall, that was, it didn't cost anything, because the city was much smaller, there was still the income over expense relative to the market was still orders of magnitude larger than perhaps the income over expense now, at least in terms of the relevant cost 30 years ago. And so, some programs were able to be provided to the community as opposed to charging a cost, or the cost was minimal. And we've reached a time in both the life stage, perhaps, of the market, and we have to be thinking of the market in terms of its life stage. Does it go, is this a bump in the road? Is there something we can do to make the market more relevant, more relevant to consumers today, and achieve the crowds of 20,000 or 22,000 that we'd get 30 years ago on a Tuesday, and another 12 to 15 on a Wednesday? Or do we have to begin planning over the long term for a potential soft landing of the city without the market and without that revenue?
Yeah, I would, I totally agree with you. I mean, I think, we've had this conversation, you and I, and I just think the market, you know, we became complacent, we became very comfortable, or spoiled, for lack of a better word, for many years with the market, and then now when the revenue turned the other way, then we're like scrambling now. But this question still remains, that, let's say we didn't have the market, let's say we went back to 1950, and we never had a market, so we would still have a parks or recreation, well, I hope that we would, it may not be as robust, so, but what you're telling me is that we basically, even with the contribution of the market revenue, I mean, people are saying, we should have a phenomenal parks or recreation program with a, you know, a sugar daddy of 100, or 1.3 million dollars kicking in, I mean, we should have a great, you know, but that's the struggle, it's like, you take away that, so you're telling me that for a city our size, our parks and recreation program is more robust than another city?
Well, for a city our size, given the constraints that we have on our general fund, sure.
Which leads me back to the parks again. You talked about the parks, and you were saying these impact fees. So it seems to me that we've took our city, and we've allowed it to develop with developers, taken these impact fees, and went ahead and built all these parks, and now we have, you know, now I have, you know, 20 cars in my driveway that I have to put tires and maintain, and I don't have the money to do that. We just keep doing, I mean, are we not ever to take that money? I know we can't use it for staff, you said, but are we ever able to take that money and say, we're not going to build a new park with that impact money, but we can put it in a certain fund and do, I mean, do we have to build those parks? Because for me, it makes me not want to build any more houses. If building 100 more houses means another park, or however many, wherever the ratio is, that's just going to give us deeper in a hole with maintenance.
Okay, two complex thoughts there, but two very important ones, because I have two points to make. One, the impact fees you collect have to be spent consistent with the reason why you collected them in the first place. And there, you know, you actually should be reporting out on a frequency that shows how those funds are spent. There are times where you have to collect them for some period of time in order to amass enough to be able to do a costly project, but the bottom line is, they have to be spent for the purposes for which they were collected. But second, you talk about development, or, you know, maybe not wanting to do development, and I would certainly not advocate that as a position, but you're making an important point. Because when we bring development into this city, we can't do it based on whether we think the developer has a pretty picture to show us, or whether or not the, we think that the developer is a great company. We have to bring it in based on whether or not the services can be provided to that development, given the fiscal impact of what that development is going to provide. Now, for sure, there's two sides of the ledger with respect to development. They're going to bring some revenue, they're going to bring presumably increased sales tax, and we can work out fiscal impact analyses that basically will show us a reasonable expectation of what a new development will provide. But if you accept anything less than what they should provide in order to maintain budget balance and be able to continue to provide services to your community, then I would say that that is a, you're making a decision that's inconsistent with long-term financial health of the community. And so, all of these things have to be viewed in the global context. That's my point on your.
The only thing I would add to that is, it's also inconsistent with the policies of the general plan. The policies of the general plan clearly state that new development should pay 100% of the service cost, and that there be no cost allocated to existing residents. And that is, has been a fundamental flaw in this community in terms of approving new development. They look at the pretty picture, they go to lunch with the developer, they get bought. And I've seen it. And that has put this city in, it's not the sole reason, but it's certainly been a contributing factor.
So you're saying the game plan was to always have development pay for itself?
Absolutely. State law says that. State law says that you can charge new development to pay its own fair share. No more, no less. And the concern you express about new parks, I don't, I don't share that. Because there are mechanisms to put in place, Prop 218 changed the landscape when it came to lighting landscape districts. You used to be able to do a CIP adjustment on that, but you can't do that the way it used to be done. So there are mechanisms to be put in place, so I don't think, I would agree with the city manager, we would not want to stop development.
No, I didn't mean in that context, I just meant, it just, this is what people are thinking, like if, and I understand the lighting landscape impact and how, and we're starting to go negative on, you know, on two of them now, and I know that we've talked about the options to fix that, I know what those options are, but, but still, big picture here, I mean, even, we're still only talking about, you know, 250,000, we're sucking 250,000 out of the general fund, lighting landscapes are pulling us down by that much, that still doesn't seem like the big problem here. We, what I'm seeing right now, what you guys have pictured, you guys have painted for me so far, at least from my understanding, is lighting landscape and parks or recreation are the two main factors that are hurting the general fund the hardest at this moment.
It's a cumulative issue, though. This isn't just once a year.
Yeah, this has been going on for a long time. And so, what's happened is that our general fund, for other reasons and other decisions that have been made along the way as well, that are not related to Parks and Recreation, or necessarily related to the lighting landscaping district, our general fund has reached its maximum capacity to provide revenue to support all of those expenses.
Do you think that there was a misconception from previous councils, going back, I mean, however many years, I'm not going to, but do you think there was a misconception of, you know, property taxes are going to be here, and we have sales tax revenues, everything's kind of trending upwards, so we don't need to, I mean, obviously, what you just told me is the can got kicked down the road for a long, long time. I mean, how do we, this, lighting landscape is not something new, right Kurt? I mean, it's been around for, so why was it not solved? Why was something not put into, why was there not a discussion, we have to, you know, to change trajectory like five years ago, or?
I can only assume that, you know, because, as I said before, we can, we can go back and we can want to criticize every potential decision that was made along the way, but in reality, what we, it's easy to make those criticisms. It's sort of like social media, you can do or say anything hiding behind a keyboard, but what you're probably not doing is really analyzing and looking at the facts. And so, my assumption is that over many years, very good people were trying to make the best decisions they could, and that the circumstances they were dealing with may have been different. I think that there very well may be decisions that were made in the past about, say, the lighting landscaping districts, to, that perhaps we recognized it was a problem 10 or 15 years ago, and we, maybe if there's a fault line there, we should have been on that 10 or 15 years ago. But we've made it look easy in the community, and we've made it look unnecessary in the community, to provide for that, the revenue to serve those developments where we do this lighting and landscaping, by always pitching in from the general fund, and making, you know, we're essentially always pulling the rabbit out of the hat.
Well, it's not that we, it's not, well, it's not only that there are no more rabbits, we don't have a hat.
Yeah. I have a couple of comments. Vice Mayor Farmer, if you're done, I'm sorry. You paused.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I have lots of thoughts. You know, here's, here's the bottom line, in my estimation, you know, we're elected to manage and set the budget. We're elected to hire and manage the city manager. Those are our jobs up here, and policies, decisions related to those. Listen, it's very simple in my mind, you have revenues and expenditures. And, you know, when the big downturn came, many of us in our own homes had to adjust our expenditures, or increase our revenue, get another job, or turn cable off. And I'm really just saying that kind of tongue-in-cheek, but it's kind of what we have, we should have been doing in government as well. I personally don't think that the first answer to anything is raising fees, or asking for the community to increase taxes. I'm just, that, that's not how, that's not fundamentally where I'm at. And I think that we need to roll up our sleeves, and I'm going to preface this next statement by saying, we have great staff, and I'm sure that everybody has tried to do what they could do as it relates to the budget. But take one last look at everything we have in our budgets, whether they're department budgets, or the overall budget, and say, where can we stop wasteful spending? Now, I suspect that everybody's going to come back and say, Rich, we've been trying to, we've cut wasteful spending three years ago, or five years ago, whatever it is. But really, you know, look at those things like office expenses, and things that don't touch the community directly, or don't touch the staff directly. One of the things we need to consider moving forward is our unfunded retirement obligations that we have for employees. And if that's, that is going to change with perjurable, and rates of return, and things like that, we definitely need to consider what that looks like. And that's something that we really haven't spoken about, in that 71% of personnel costs every year, that goes, seems to be, have been going up, at least for the last eight years. And so, this is a, this is a big issue, and I, and I think that our general fund pays for a lot. I mean, it touches every service in our, in our community. And what we need to really think about is, how are we going to reduce our expenditures? Do we have, do we have positions that are still unfilled? I don't, I don't think it's practical to budget on unfilled positions and use that cost savings to budget, but what, if we do have unfilled positions, do we? cost savings to budget, but what, if we do have unfilled positions, do we not hire them? And, you know, what are we going to do moving forward? I think our park and recreation, having the, the market is wonderful. I think it's a great opportunity for additional funds into the community that we wouldn't otherwise have. And, but at the end of the day, we still have a deficit that, in, in the general fund that we're going to have to address. And as well as lighting and landscape. And I just want to talk a little bit about lighting and landscape and Prop 218. You know, communities all over are having the same issue and it's, I think, and again, in my humble opinion, I believe much of it has to do with the way in which the benefit zones were created by law in the late, I think it was the late 70s, there was no escalator built in. And so they were, they were doomed to fail from the beginning. We just didn't realize it maybe back then. But, you know, communities to the north of us are having the same issue. If you, you know, have seen the news lately, our community just to the south of us just went out to a, for attacks. And so not that it's okay to have the same issues, but Vice Mayor Farmer, you were asking about the, you know, why is it unfunded and how can we get out of it? I, I think there's several ways. I mean, we either reduce services or increase revenue. And so, and what that looks like, I think is real important that we get the community buy-in on that moving forward. Here's where we're at, and I think this is a great way to start, but here's where we're at. What can we do? What are the expectations of services from the city? And we need to be able to say, this is what that looks like. This is what $1 million looks like in services, or this is what $1.5 million looks like in services. So that we all have the same understanding of what we either need to cut or ask the community for. So those are just kind of my thoughts and.
I agree. I just, just a simple analogy, I just, I feel like it's always cut services or make more money. I mean, if I have a lawn guy and he mows my lawn once a week and he comes to me and says, hey, you know, if we're going to keep doing what we're doing, you're going to either need to make more money or I'm going to mow your lawn less. Well, why are we not looking at like, maybe the lawn guy makes too much money? Like, I mean, there, there's a third option. I mean, I'm not saying, I just, I feel like I've seen things happen where overhead was increased and now it's like, oh, we got to make more money or we're going to have to cut. But it's always cut services, it's always cut parks and recreation. Parks and recreation is the department that the citizens use the most. They feel like it's the one thing that people feel like they get for their tax money and it's the first thing on the chopping block. And I, and I'm not, I'm just saying, I know it's hard, we have to make hard decisions, but I just, it's frustrating to, it's the automatic thing to look at that. I mean, we have a, we have a room full of people that just came here to come, to express their, you know, their being upset about these wa, these waste rates. And now here we are up here talking about how we got to make more money. Well, how make more money? How? You know, we're going to put something on the ballot to try to fix the lighting landscape. Obviously, that's the most reasonable idea, but what does that require? It's going to require people making more money on their taxes. People don't want to hear that. I know it's tough for them to hear, but it's like, it's frustrating for the citizens to sit up there and think, you know, why should I have to bear the brunt of it? Why, why does bad decisions of our government now result in me having to come out of my pocket deeper because of, because of bad, you know, business management by the city? So, you know, I'm not sitting here saying that, I'm just voicing my frustration. I'm sure this is echoing in the people that are watching this right now from home. So, yeah.
Well, I, I will just say that, you know, cutting a contracted employees or cutting the lighting landscape contractors' wages is reducing services, cutting services in a, in a financial perspective. We're not, we're, you know, you're either taxed or you're reduced. And so I, again, I want to reiterate, I am not one to say, let's go ask the public for money. I think we, I think there might be a lot we can do to find out where we can reduce expenditures before asking for more money.
The only thing that is clear to me is that something needs to be done because obviously in two years there, we will be upside down. We will have burned our entire reserve. I'm not, you know, going to sit here tonight and say what decision I would accept or reject. I think all options should be on the table and I think staff is researching those options to bring forward to council, whether it's a reduction in services or the potential to ask the community, whether they would like to pay more to increase services or maintain services. I think those are all options that this council needs to consider. And I think at the same time, whatever action we do take, it needs to address this, you know, structural instability in our, in our, in our budget. There is, I, I don't see that there's any way around it. You know, and it, it may not, it may be very distasteful, but it is something where we, we have been put in the position to make those decisions.
Claire, can you clarify? I'm sorry. Go ahead. You go ahead.
Same thing. I'm agree with other council members. You know, we are in a budget crisis. You know, it's no matter you're running a small business, you're running as a city. As a council member, that's my personally and everybody's responsibility to make the budget. We see the budget going to in deficit and I don't think that we are here today to make a decision, but we need to take every avenue, every look of what we can do, how we can increase the revenue and how we can decrease the expense. So the expense, we can decrease the expense and I, I believe I'm here to, you know, cut any service at all, but at the end of the day, we need to prioritize, look whatever we need to do. And I think as a combined with everybody, with the staff and everybody, I think at the end of the day or next month or so, we should come some kind of decision to increase the revenue and decrease the expense so we can match our budget.
Claire, can you clarify that? I just want to make sure I'm not reading this incorrectly. You have in fiscal year 2018, 19, you have the parks and recreation contribution is 1.4 million, $42,910. And then fiscal year 19, you have it as 1.2 million. Does that reflect an uptick in the revenue? Is that a turner? Is that showing a turnaround in market? Because we're put, you're, you're showing we're putting, having to put in less, forecast to put in less?
I'm going to answer that and let Armando answer a little bit more. I think in, first of all, in 1819, there's a reduction in the revenue line for parks and rec because we had a very rainy January. There were also reductions in some of the costs, so it's not fully reflected in, in some of the numbers I identified. So I think the uptick in revenue has to with normal season. I think you're, what, what we've seen for more than 10 years is that the revenue increases on a norm and there really aren't increases in that, it's just seasonal increases. It's not like we expect the volume at the market to go up, but your expenditures are always going up, right? And so expenditures will vary and will fluctuate.
Yeah, I'm just referring to the contribution line where it says that you're forecasting we'll only contribute.
It's the net impact. It's the net impact of revenues and expenditures. So, yeah, it's.
You know, going back to the, you don't have to go back and look at it, but do you know, the graph that we saw earlier, you know, I was looking at, you know, most of our money, it's, you know, 75 percent or 48% sales tax and 24%, a 48% property and 24% sales tax. And I, I sit here and I keep thinking about these people speaking here about businesses closing and it's like, we have a budget problem here, but we could be facing even a worse problem. We could be sitting here saying, oh, we're going to make the market make more money or we're going to do this or that, or we're going to fix lighting and landscape. And at the same time we're doing that, we could be losing money on the other side because if we have businesses closed, that's going to directly impact our 24% sales tax. And any upticks that we foresee of new businesses coming to town that may say, you know what, it's crazy in Galt right now with his rates, this and that, you know, I think I'm just going to, you know, pass right now. I mean, any, any forecast that somebody like Amy Mendez might be seeing might not happen because of that too. So we, this is like, this is, this is something that's kind of, you know, blindsiding us from behind that we, we need, we need to, us as a council need to really be thinking, and though two of us walked away, but we need to be thinking about cognizant of how this is going to impact us long-term, this, this waste thing. Because, you know, we're talking about increasing revenues, but we also got to make sure we maintain the ones we have now.
This year, we will have a shortfall of about $93,000 in revenues for the market. As you guys know, this was a very rainy year. We do usually account for that, but with the, I mean, including today, we're in May and we, we had another rain out because of forecast of rain, but the, the rain November through, up through April really just hurt the market quite a bit. Going into November, we were above what we had projected and then with the rain data just took us under.
Well, I know you guys are doing a lot of things to try to increase the revenue of the market. I mean, there's been a lot of ideas thrown around. I know you guys have already started implementing some of those ideas and, you know, hopefully one of those will, will really, you know, get some traction and, and will turn things around or at least, you know, stabilize them, I guess. I'm looking for stabilization at this point. Be optimist, be optimist and things will go the other way, but if we can just stabilize it, that would be like huge. But so I just want to say, you know, the public watching, there is a lot of things that are already in the works to try to do something with the revenue of the market.
And, and if I could make a point, and then if Claire can confirm this, if not for AB 3773, you would see the market or, excuse me, parks and recreation in that general fund chart. But since we have to account for that money separately, it looks like we're a different account. As interim city manager said, most parks and rec apartments are within the general fund. We just have to keep it separate because of AB 3773. I know you guys understand that, but I know probably a lot of our, our people watching don't understand that. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that typically we would have been in that general fund picture, but we have to keep it separate because of the bill.
And honestly, that may be part of the 12-year impact of the market change in revenue, how it wasn't really looked at. First of all, 15 years ago, if you'd have told me I would be doing most of my shopping online, I would have told you you were nuts. And so there was no expectation that that revenue would have been hit by that kind of market dynamic. But, but the other thing is all of that revenue and expense being over here in this other fund has, you know, that, as you could see from that side and the one before it, the city was waiting until the next year to even try and put it in that fund balance, general fund. So they were kind of kicking the can down the road a little bit. But it's, it's our reality now.
Yeah, and I, I don't want to dive into people's ideas and what they think, but I, I just want to make a, a point of something. I hear that a lot. I hear people saying, oh, the market, you know, because of Amazon and blah, blah, you know. The problem is that the market, the market, the way it functioned, the whole concept of the Galt flea market is just complacent. It's not like, you know, people never went to the market to buy, you know, their groceries or their, the market, flea markets, flea markets is an old term, but markets and like that nowadays are more of a social destination. You know, the things we're doing now with the market, like having the music and having evening, I mean, the day of a Tuesday, Wednesday market for the weekday is outdated. I mean, who can go to that such a thing? So the thing that we're doing now where we're trying to do like evening market and we're trying to have like music and bring in more, to make it like more of a social thing, I think is a great step. Because I don't, I don't buy into the whole Amazon. That's, that's why the flea market's dying because people go to the Galt flea market to buy things they didn't know they wanted until they saw it when they were there. People don't go there, when people go online to shop something, they're saying, I need this and I'm going to go buy it.
And I don't have time.
The people at the market go and say, oh, look at that, I'm going to buy that. It, that's, that's the way people buy stuff at a market, such as the market, the Galt market. They're not supposed to be going for, you know, with a mission. So I, anyways, I just wanted that, that theory to me, I don't, I don't, you know, I just personally don't believe it entirely, but I think, but, but the concept of the market that's been for, you know, 50 years, 60 years is just outdated.
Yeah. Well, regardless of what all the situations that got us here is kind of where we are. So every improvement, we will be rolling over all the rocks and looking at those, but that's kind of where we are.
So Claire, to clarify some of the projections that we have for future revenues, we've been talking about maybe redeveloping this area where a lot of that money would go to parks and rec. That's a long way off. Is that in any of your projections or are any of the developments that are on the future in these projections? Like we have Eastview or is that two years off?
So let me talk a little bit about that. Thank you for the segue. Once a decision has been made and a contract has been implemented in some way, I'm going to let, this developer is going to build this development. It ends up in the long-range plan based on what we think is going to occur. It ends up in the budget once we start having dollars in, in actual activities. That's probably not a great example for the budget, but, but we do review those building units. The other things, like when you open a business here in town, once that decision has been made and the doors are open, we're putting it in the budget and the long-range plan. So those, those kinds of things may take years to get to fruition, but they are being put into especially the long-range plan.
But not for the 2020. So what we're looking at through 2020, where we're alarmed, are there any future development projections in that budget?
Certainly, but as was mentioned and it was shown at our state of the city addresses, construction is slow, especially single family. Last year, we had our lowest output since, boy, 10 years ago, since before the recession. So this next coming year, we have, what am I projecting? We're projecting, man, it's, it's, we're, we're projecting 66 residential units for the next fiscal year, but that's really Elliott, Elliott's Construction. They have their final phase of River Oaks going through. They should finish that up and then hopefully they get started on Veranda. So that's still pretty light considering the number of units we have in the hopper. And then we do have some commercial projected. We were, you know, we're projecting La Quinta to come in and, and pull the permit in that next fiscal year and then also some other smaller ones coming in. But there is some good news. We did get a design review application for KB Homes for that Cardoso subdivision. And so we think that can come in a little bit quicker than anticipated and maybe that starts building in the next fiscal year and that could help out.
For, for me though, when I, when I hear you say these things, I, you know, we, we can't, we need to break out of the mindset that, that development's always going to fix our money problems. Like we're living on what our means, so we just got to build more houses. Oh, hey, we're, we're going to run short. We need to get somebody to build more houses. Then we're just going to contest and we're going to, it's going to be in a vicious circle. And the people of Galt that are hearing that right now, they're probably like squirming in their chairs because we know how people feel about the growth in this town, let's be honest. So, I mean, we can't just always depend on that as being the, the magic bullet. I still just go back to live within our means, like, like Tom said in the beginning, we can't always depend on more revenue from at least that source. You know, I, I would love to see more business revenue, you know, because the people get excited about that. They want to see more businesses here, whatever. Of course, in light of what's going on right now, it's a little overshadowing of that, but that's why I feel like, again, that's so important that we maintain that.
Fair point.
So.
That's why I was trying to clarify what actually is, is in there and it's not much.
No.
So, and then while you were out, I was talking about the proposed, what we're, the exploratory stages of what we're thinking about doing with the downtown center and that's years off. So that's not in any of these budget projections.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
In this process, we did refresh the long-range financial plan. There's not a lot of difference from it, but, but the, the charts are a little bit improved. Again, this is the good, I don't want to use bad term around this, but the yellow part is the available balance and that's what's diminishing over time. The reason why it had grown is budget cuts and kicking basically a short-term can down the road. So we'll, we'll want to be looking at some other steps because eventually that's gone. So moving forward, this presentation is really to bring to you, the council and the public, the proposed budget amendments, adjustments, modifications and those appropriations associated with them, which will be brought back to you on June 4th for a public hearing. In the meantime, we've talked quite a bit about corrections to some of the structural deficits in the system. We would like to suggest a calendar of events that starts in June or July after that, after that approval, hopefully of that budget, to start reviewing more in-depth general fund, parks and rec and the LLDs. And then hopefully by August, be working with the council. And then hopefully by August, be working with the council, bring you options. You've already given us some ideas, but hopefully through this process, we'll have more. And then hopefully by September, we'd like to have some kind of council direction and action on some of these hard decisions that we just talked about.
I have one last, if nobody's going to jump in, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
You know, looking at our, some of these are just basic questions that I want people to understand that are maybe listening, but for myself. So what's the purpose of our general fund reserve? If you can just explain just basic.
Rainy day fund. So it is the, there's, it is for ups and downs. It's not for structural imbalance. It's not to cover ongoing costs. It's really, you know, some emergency.
What defines ups and downs? Explain, define that one.
Got a phone call earlier today or yesterday about a pump breaking down, critical pump, something like that. It may not be in the budget. That's your rainy day fund. You could have an economic downturn that's, that's temporary that you, that would address. I mean, everybody depleted their general fund reserves during the Great Recession. Galt did the same thing.
We did. Did we?
Yeah.
We depleted the, we basically, when we went through the recession, we had, we depleted our reserves?
To some extent, absolutely.
Well, I mean, because depleted means, depleted, when I say depleted, I mean, is it like dipped into it, or it's like we wiped it out?
We still have a general fund reserve.
Okay. Because I mean, I have people asking me, you know, as you know, we, we increased our general fund reserve from 20 to 25% last June of 2017. So, you know, people say it's a rainy day fund. To me, it feels like it's raining. I just wondering if, if there's any influx of money that would help at all. I know we're talking about trending downward, but if, if there's, if there's any, would any influx of, of just a chunk of money at any point right now help with anything we're talking about?
Well, let me, let me first address, or recap your first question, which is, what is a rainy day fund used for? Think of extraordinary, unplanned, unbudgeted, one-time expenses. Because that reserve fund, you can only ever spend one time.
No, I understand that. I, I just, I, I just looking for, is there an example of it? Because I, when public, when something breaks or a pump, whatever, I don't think we're going to the general fund to buy that.
Well, for, for instance, you're doing that with the Parks and Rec Fund right now. That's exactly what's happening. Now, what you've created, what, what the city has created for itself, not, not you, but what the city has created for itself is a structural deficit because it's spending money that only exists one time, year after year after year, for ongoing operations, budgeted operations. So here, here would be an example. Let's assume balanced general fund budget, balanced Parks and Rec budget. But the Parks and Rec budget doesn't, in any particular year, budget for a big giant crack in the pool. And it's going to cost $250,000, $300,000 to fix that big giant crack, you know, and, and you got to get it fixed. And then you have to replaster after you fix it. And, but that money isn't budgeted anywhere. And you have, in your budget, you have just enough res, revenue to meet your budgeted expenses. Well, what you might do is then dip into your general fund reserve to fix the pool. One time, $250,000, $300,000 cost, got it fixed, away you go. That's the type of expenditure you want to be utilizing it for. Another thing to think about is a natural disaster of some sort or type. We've seen natural disasters in Santa Rosa, in Paradise, places like that, where fires take out entire neighborhoods, compromise water and sewer systems, and, and, and other types of city facilities. And so you may need that fund to begin to immediately address some of the problems facing your community. Or it could be an earthquake for that matter. But you, and so you, in order to provide or render services, you may draw upon those funds to be able to get outsiders coming in that are under contract to do something that you need them to do as a result of, of that disaster.
Yeah, just to clarify, I know what it's for. I just wanted to, I wanted you to, to kind of interpret what the city views as reasons why it would touch that money. I was looking for that. You know, I know when things are trending downward, you can't just start taking money out of your savings account and start throwing at it because it's, it's going to, then all that money will be gone. You're still, you're not correcting the course of, 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 of the, you know, the direction. But I just wonder that if we can, of course, you know, get, get ourselves where we can stabilize, and let's say that in a year from now, we've stabilized and we, we're no longer, you know, going downwards, but we're still shortfall of, you know, I don't know, $100,000, $200,000 a year. We just don't have enough revenue and to cover that, and it's every year, it's a 200 grand, 200 grand, 200 grand that were shortfall. I mean, you know, and I've said this many times, you know, I talked to, so I talked to the city, city council member in Lodi. You know, Lodi has a 16% reserve. They have 8% for financial stability, 8% catastrophic, which would be your earthquake. And that and the 8% is, the other 8 is for financial stability. So they're, they're at 16%, you know, and then Folsom has a 15% reserve. So all I'm getting at is if we get to a point where we're just quite shy, instead of getting down to like, we're like, well, we're just a little bit short each year, we're going to either have to like chop staff or cut, you know, employees or, you know, things, dramatic things like that. I mean, we need, I think we need to be considering, you know, is 25 an appropriate reserve? Because obviously, we were at 20 for a long, long time until our previous city manager upped it to 25. I don't know if that was a wise decision at the time because that was money we probably didn't, couldn't afford to put in the cookie jar, in my opinion. So I just think that we need to be considering that, too. I, obviously, we're already going to be dipping into it, but I just saying, just want to throw that out there.
My concern with that analysis is though, John, you're talking percentages. You're not talking dollars. So you need to really look at what, what are, what's the actual dollar amount in each one of those communities? And you also, again, as, as the manager said earlier, you have to look and see, what is, what are the main sources of revenue? And what percentages are those of the general fund? I mean, if you're talking 50% of your general fund revenue comes from sales tax, where in Galt it's 25%, that's a significant difference. Property tax, the same thing. So I mean, I'm not uncomfortable with 25. I, I would feel uncomfortable going less than 25 for the reasons that, that the city manager stated. I mean, there are things out there that maybe we can't even foresee, this being one of them, but, but we have brought this on. This is, this is, you know, a structural issue that can be resolved, it needs to be resolved, but I, I would be uncomfortable going less.
Yeah, no, I understand. Nothing wrong with being conservative. I, I get it. But, you know, when I was at the League of Cities, we spoke to, I spoke to one of the presenters, actually several, a couple of presenters, and we talked about, you know, what is the, you know, I said, well, what's the standard, what is the standard? And he said, well, there is no standard. It depends on the, on the, on the city. And so, you know, 48% of, we're a bedroom community, so we have, if you want to just compare cities, I mean, I think we have what's considered a more stable revenue source than some other cities would have that are maybe like more touristy types of cities, whatever. 48% comes from property tax. That means, that's a pretty stable, I mean, we would have, even if we had a housing bubble again and we lost 20% of our homes, we're going to take a 20% hit to that. I mean, we have a stable, we have a very stable revenue. And so because of that, I think we're, we're not as, it's not as risky for us to, to looking at that. And I'm not, I'm not sitting here advocating for blowing through. I'm just simply saying that, you know, you, everybody's saying, every option's on the table, and I'm saying that we have a 25% reserve policy that was put into place from a 20% reserve policy by a city manager who, in my opinion, got us in the predicament we're in now. So I'm looking back at every decision that was made during his tenure, saying, we need to maybe look at that policy and change it back or something because, so that's all I'm saying. I, I agree. There's nothing wrong with being conservative. And I get it. I'm just saying every option should be looked at.
And, and I, I think you're right. Every, every option should be on the table. But just to, to clarify for, for the public, even if you reduce to that from 25 to 20, you can spend that 5% once. It's not ongoing revenue.
Yeah, the only thing, you know, the current might be have a more thing, I would like to clarification, what basis we have a 25% reserve? Is this city-wise, or that's very much all the average, or that's very standard? How the council before they, they come up with that, we have to have a 25% reserve? What basis, what?
So oftentimes, it's a risk assessment of, of the city. Candidly, I've been in cities that had as low as like a 7% or 8% reserve. Again, typically a constrained economic environment. And I've been in cities that had a 60% reserve on a general fund, a 60% reserve on a general fund that was $45 million. And, and so I, you know, what you're, what you're assessing is a bit of risk. You're also assessing not to have so much money in reserve that you're not doing some, again, because you can only spend the reserve one time. It's not ongoing. You know, there, there might be some sort of facility or something that you may want to consider providing to the community so that you, you, you don't just begin hoarding, hoarding cash that can, that can actually sometimes pile up for different reasons. Different, different things happen and, and you can, not every year does it steadily increase. I would be very cautious, given our environment, to think that reducing the deficit five, or excuse me, reducing the reserve 5% is going to have a significant impact on our structural deficit because it, it won't. It, it'll, it's sort of like what we're doing with the unallocated fund balance. We're just drawing it down. The, the unallocated fund balances, as you saw, in, in a, you know, within the next 18 months is gone, you know.
But I mean, like more specific things, like you, you mentioned deferred maintenance is one of the things that we have on the horizon. You know, if, if you don't, if you don't fix something, if you don't, if you don't fix the knock on the engine pretty, pretty soon, you know, it's not just a water pump, it's an entire engine. So I mean, you're saying one-time purchases. I'm just saying for, there seems to be, for me, certain things in the budget or certain things that we're going to need to be paying for. And if we keep kicking those cans down the road and don't look at maybe that 5% that we put away extra to maybe fix those before they become, you know, out of control and become, you know, twice the cost. So, so I should have been.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think in that context, that is clearly within the purview of the council to, to make some of those decisions. And, and that, you know, I think very much can be a part of our, of what we address together in June and July and, and make some decisions in, in August. Absolutely.
And, and I agree. I mean, you know, for, for one time, capital expenditures for repairs or deferred maintenance, you know, if you had to dip into reserves, assuming the reserves were available, I don't have a problem with that. Because then you would look at a repayment schedule to rebuild your reserves. I mean, you, you wouldn't go out with an expenditure plan without a repayment plan, and, and clearly that makes sense. So I, I, I agree with that.
But I mean, you, you were on the council before, you know, I was, and when, you know, when the city manager came and said, hey, let's up this 5%, and I'm not saying that was a, a good or bad decision. I'm not going to sit here, what I'm saying, oh, but before he came and asked for that, there wasn't like you and the rest of the council were sitting around going, oh, man, we need more in our reserves. 20% at that time, before that was suggested, was you were fine with that. And so to now, now have adjusted your mind to think, oh, man, we can't go less than 25, I just, you know, for me, if, if my wife and I are making X amount of money and we're putting away, you know, 25% instead of 20 like we used to because we make more money, and then things start, you know, coming off the rails, and we're like finding out we're not living within our means, and we make all the cuts we can, but we're still a little bit short of making those bills every month. To me, dipping into that 5 is not a one-time expense. We're actually now going to go back to putting away 20% of our paychecks and taking that extra 5 and spreading amongst our bills. And that's the concept that I'm, I'm just pitching here, is that, too. So it's not just one time. It's, it's maybe, maybe we, we need to be looking at, you know, I don't know how that would factor in.
See, but the difference is, in, in this scenario, we don't have the revenue to replace it at this point. You're saying you take it out of your paycheck and you'd spend it. We don't have it in a paycheck to spend. That's the whole point. We are spending way more than we are taking in. I mean, even to get out of what we're in now, we're going to drop below the 4 million in the 25% in reserve. We're going below that. We have to.
Right, I know, because we're.
In order to come back out. I think we should set a goal, though, to, to, to get back to, I think, a 25% reserve. I don't think that's unreasonable. That's just me personally.
Yeah, I mean, I, we, obviously, we need to stabilize. I mean, we're in a downward turn and we're trying to, you know, we, but I mean, if we can stabilize and then we're still looking for a little bit to try to bring us up to break an even, I, I mean, that, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying, obviously, if when you're just, you're just going downhill, you start doing that, it's not going to fix it. It's only going to prolong it for, you're going to get by a little bit longer, and then you're going to be done. But I'm just saying, you know, once we stabilize and figure out, I think we're going to be faced with still some cut. I just don't see us being able to, I can see us making cuts and changes and stuff, decisions that we're going to be making that are going to stabilize. I can see we're going to do some stuff and we're going to stabilize it. But to turn it around and go the other direction, that's going to be a whole nother thing. I actually really think it is, so.
Right, so you're saying instead of putting away 20%, only put away 15. We're not putting away 20. So if you start taking that extra 5% out every month, your, your savings, if, if you're not putting in your savings, if you're only taking out, eventually, that will be gone 10, might be 10, 20 years, but then.
Right, well, obviously, but, but in 2017 till now, we clearly, when the policy got put into place to do an extra 5, we were actually, obviously, we were putting that money away. Were we not?
Only one time. Again, it's one time. It's one time. It's not every year.
Right, what?
Yeah, we haven't.
It is not every year.
We just lump summed 5% extra in there?
Yes. It is a static dollar amount.
Which was like $800,000 or something, roughly.
They had a, it was recommended by the finance director and the city manager that we have $800,000 overage somehow, and we put it in the reserves. Haven't had it since.
But we're maintaining that every year?
No, we're digging into it now, right.
No, but I mean, the, the concept would be to maintain it every year.
Yes.
But not add to it.
Your operating costs.
Yeah, and we maintain it right now. So we make, you know, based on the general fund expenses, we make that 25% allocation, you know, hold, hold that 25% as the economic stability reserve or general fund reserve. And, and so it might, if, if your general fund expenses have gone up, it might incrementally increase a little bit. But to, to maintain that 25% of general fund expenses. But again, it, given our situation right now, we aren't able to, to, if we spent some of that, we aren't able to easily replace it because our, we're, we're in a position where we're using our unallocated balance right now. Remember, you have two $4 million pots or 4.4 million pots. One is all general fund revenues minus your reserve. And then, you know, when you make all your other deductions, we, we started this year out with 4.4 million or 4.8, whatever it was. And, but, but we're drawing on that to the tune of about 2.4 million this year. And so then next year, it'll be, we will similarly draw nearly 2 million on that, drawing it down to about 777. In year three, if we do nothing, now you'll be pulling a couple million out of your, 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 your general fund reserve. And you don't want to go there. I, 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 there is nothing, there is no rationale in the world that would satisfy me as a city manager for doing that.
Because it's just going for ongoing expenditures.
Because it's going for ongoing expenditure.
And you have not addressed the structural problem.
Right, oh, no, I, I understand clearly.
If, if you had to dip into it for a one-time expenditure because something happens, that's what it's there for. Absolutely.
I, I think at this point, for me, I just question every financial decision that was made last year. I mean, to be frank.
Well, this is more than one year. This is more than one year.
Well, yeah, 18 months, I would say. I mean, since.
No, this goes back to when the city started subsidizing the market and subsidizing the lighting landscape districts. I mean, you have to go back and look and see how decisions were made back then, and that's been over 10 years.
Yeah, but I, and I don't want to, I, I don't want to.
And I'm not saying there, there were decisions made in the last couple of years that weren't the best. What I'm saying is, it is not a single point in time, and I agree with the city manager on that, that this has been a cumulative issue, and now we are at a point where it needs to be addressed.
So I know you jumped, you two gentlemen stepped out when I said something. I don't know if you heard it, but I was, I made a mention that, you know, we really need to, when we're looking at this budget, we really still need to keep it front and center that we need to figure out how we're going to resolve this, this waste issue, too. Because this could be, you know, we were trying to stabilize income, and we could be taking a downturn with sales tax if these businesses went their way. And just like the 150, you know, there's like 150,000 projected TOT money coming from Mr. Patel's facility if he was to say theoretically not build that, like he's threatening to. You know, that's 150,000. TOT, TOT goes right in the general fund, and my.
It does.
So I mean, you know, so we could fix our lighting and landscape and then turn around and just lose 150 grand because, you know, Mr. Hotel owner decides he's just not going to do anything. So I mean, we got, we got to make sure we stabilize, but also not lose other that we have. And this, this whole thing is, feels like it's creeping up on us. And so anyways, you guys were outside, and I don't know if you heard that.
I heard it after I left the restroom to come out. I, I have just a couple of comments, and, and I want to reiterate something that Mr. Solis said a few minutes.
I have just a couple of comments and I want to reiterate something that Mr. Solis said a few minutes ago. You know, we have, even in our current slide that's up here, we have identified three budgets that we need to look at. One is the general fund as a whole. One is the lighting landscape district funds. Multiple funds, but kind of one group, if you will. And then the other is park and rec. And Parks and Recreation, like he said, is called out separately because of the assembly bill. So I don't, it sounds like we're talking a lot about just Parks and Rec and the lighting landscape. But, you know, there's, there are other places, I am sure, in our other departments in the city that we could cut back, tighten up our belts a little bit and do some of those things. So I don't want to, direction for me, as, again, as one council member, is to really look at all departments, not just one or a couple of different funds. Does that make sense?
The majority of those departments are in general fund and we will be looking at them.
Right. So that's my point. And regardless of whether we have 25 or 20% put into reserves, in four years, it's all going to be gone. And we're not going to, in those four years, be putting anything away. So I think that's an important point, though. Looking at our risk analysis moving forward, I suspect that some of our other neighboring agencies that have a less reserve have less risk because they've done capital improvements over the years. They've done some of those things over the years that we haven't been able to. So I'm not necessarily a proponent for 25%, but I don't know what I'd be a proponent for. But I think whatever's reasonable, given our, you know, our capital improvement plan, I think that's important. And that's where you, that, you know, that's, if something unexpected happened outside of that, then that's where you would take that money from. So I think it's important to look at kind of the whole and, and see where, what we can do differently. You know, increasing revenues or cutting expenses or a combination of, or something crazy outside of the box. I mean, I'd be up, I'd be up for that.
Tom, beans at L&L's is one of the things, obviously, that's very much we have to solve is, when are we, when are we expected to hear back on an update on Mr. Winkler's work on that? I mean, you know, obviously, that's something that's time-sensitive because if it's something we need to present to the public on a ballot, it has to happen. There's a timeline with that, right? So I'm just curious, is that something that's going to be happening soon? Are we going to hear where we're at with that, with those?
Well, I think the timeline, it's a Prop 218 process that we go through. And so you can initiate the Prop 218 process at any time you want. And, and so we're working with, with Mr. Winkler on that and that will be part of our discussion that we go through. You know, when I was talking about potential, the raising of revenue, it's just that to balance a budget, you need enough revenue and you need to meet expenses. And when you're out of whack, you either, you know, figure out a way to decrease one and raise another or just decrease one or just raise another. It's just all part of the mix. And this council may talk about that and continue to decide not to do it. And at which point, you know, I will be reminding the council that while that is certainly a decision that would potentially be within your purview, it, it, it isn't a optimal type of decision if it, you can't create a sustainable, financial sustainability in, in the fund itself. And so you can, as I said, create financial sustainability a number of ways.
One final comment. The schedules that have been prepared to show more detail about all of these recommended changes will become available tomorrow for the public.
And where would the public find those?
We have a newspaper, I guess, went in today. It'll be in the clerk's office or online.
Or online, on the website.
On the website.
Thanks.
Do I need to ask if there's any public comment on this topic? Is there any public comment on this topic? Send me a letter? Okay, all of us? Great, all right. Any other comments by, that staff would like to make? Council? I just want to thank the staff for putting, I know you guys have put hours and hours into this and I really appreciate especially Claire and Tom putting it in a way I could understand. And I think the council could understand and taken the time to explain it to us. We really appreciate all the work and appreciate council making time.
And as Claire did, I want to recognize Michelle Neely and Matthew Boring, who are, you know, really the, they're the people in the salt mines on a lot of this, preparing information that we need. And they, they did a lot of work to put this together and will continue to as we move through the rest of these discussions.
Thank you guys very much. It's.
Thank you.
It's a very daunting and serious undertaking for the council and we're just going to do the best we can and hopefully you guys can help us come up with some things and get this train back on the track. All right, meeting adjourned.